Okay, greetings. Welcome to this study session, Richfield Public Schools. Today is July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, and I'm joined here by Director Polis, Director Banks-Copseau, Director Carter, Director Brackey, and I am Paula Cole. We're also joined by Superintendent Janowski, Board Secretary Cassandra Quam, members of our community, one member from staff. We are here to talk about the very fun information session on running for school board. And because my term is expiring this year, I will pass the mic in the gavel to Vice Chair Carter to lead us through this session. And I'll hang out and we'll have fun.
Eric wants to switch chairs.
Oh.
Sorry.
You don't have to.
I'm just not.
Oh.
I thought you said you wanted to switch chairs. Good.
I was hoping, but okay.
You can switch.
Nope, nice try. They can point the camera to me. We got this.
They will.
This is a study session. It's more laid back.
Yes.
Plus, I'm in charge now, so it's more laid back. We good? We ready?
Let's go.
Mic on, does this thing on? We're all punchy. It's great. Thanks, Tim. I appreciate that. All right. How do you want to? You got this. Check. So, the first question you need to ask yourself is, should I run? Why should I run? Why do I want to run? I'm not going to read all these because there's a lot of detail. There will be some I'll go through in more detail just because they're more legal. Because there is legality here. We're elected officials. But the question you need to ask yourself is, why do I want to do it? Right? What I want to be here for? You know, it's being one of the two newer members to the board. There's a lot of scrutiny. There's a lot of questions, a lot of challenges. People have a lot of opinions and they force them down on you. Not necessarily in a good way. Well, they share them with you.
You're making it sound so lovely.
It's awesome. Oh, here, we ran. But I mean, it's, but we do this because we're passionate about it. Right? I mean, I say that and clearly I make it sound like I'm scary or it's scary, but Tim's been on here for twenty-five years.
Ten, only ten.
So again, I've got the mic, so I can go ahead and run my mouth.
It's gonna be a fun hour.
Crystal's been here just as long. Eight years.
She's not that old to be here twenty-five years.
But I mean, clearly, people have a passion for it. Right? It's things that we care about. We care about the schools. We care about the students. And honestly, when I think about things, like, the reason why I do this is because I care about the kids. Right? At the end of the day, that's what I worry about. And so, there's different reasons why you may want to do this. I mean, clearly, policy work is amazing and we like going through every single policy every week. And it's fun. But that's just one of the added benefits because we're doing it for the kids. And so, if you're not sure of really why you're committed, you may want to think about it. And the thing I'll throw here for all of us is that we're all here to answer questions. Right? It's like, I know when I was in your guys' shoes, I was curious what it was like. And I sat down with several members to kind of get their opinion and feel for it. And they gave honest, candid opinions. And you're going to get different opinions from each of us, but please ask. Right? You know, stop by after the meeting and we'll share information with you as to how to get ahold of us. Also, our emails are all on the website. Eligibility requirements. You must be at least twenty-one years old, eligible voter. You must resign the district thirty days prior to election, not convicted of a felony. You also, I think it's important and we don't have it on here, is that you need to remain in the district to remain an eligible board member. And I share that as a couple of us have moved recently and we've moved to different places inside of Richfield, inside of our district, because otherwise we'd be giving up our board seats. Filing for candidacy. There's one window. It's between August first and August fifteenth. It's a very small window. Make sure to bring your two dollars. Otherwise, you get publicly chastised. Preferably bring it in cash. Right? I brought it in quarters. So, any, right? A little known secret. But you need to pay to play. And it's a short form. It takes like two seconds to fill out. And then, Alexandra, and you're done. And she's right around the corner. Finance reporting. If, when you run, you will have to fill out a form showing how much money you've spent from a campaign perspective. Regardless of how much you spent. If you spent or received or spent more than seven hundred and fifty dollars, you must file a campaign report within fourteen days of the election. Shouldn't say that right?
No.
No.
No. Oh, spending it, sorry. Because it's multiple times you do it.
Receiving it or spending it?
So, look, these guys keep me honest. You must, everybody must file a candidate, must file the form. Once you, if you haven't spent all the money, then you have to do it annually to go ahead and document until it's all done. And then, they're filled out with the school district election clerk, which is Alexandra. Resident expert, right over there. I give credit where credit's due. Okay. So, fundamental roles of the school board. I think this is the important one. And, you know, it's at a high level. I look at this and I go, you know, we do two, from my perspective, two main things. We're Steve's boss, for one. Depending on who you are, that's the most important job. And then, number two is we set policy for the school. And in that, there is some other kind of intangibles. Again, at a high level, from my perspective, is we set priority. Right? So, if there are things that are important to us, things that we want to see driven or done, we tell that to Steve. Steve execute on it, executes on it. And so, we hold him accountable. We hold ourselves accountable. We make sure the policies help drive the district in the manner in which we want it driven. So then, when I look at it, right, it's like we talked about setting vision goals. We delegate kind of the day-to-day responsibility to Steve, which is why, again, as his boss, we work, make sure that he's on track, doing what we want to see him do. But we're not hiring and firing teachers, per se. I mean, there is, that is included and it is voted on. But we're not saying, I want to see this teacher gone or I want to see this teacher hired. Right? That is the responsibility of the administration. They're doing day-to-day staffing. We're helping to guide the ship, not necessarily actually at the helm. And sorry, I go fast, so I get excited with this stuff. So, if anything, well.
More time for questions.
More time for questions. Or we can do them like along the way, too, right? No reason.
You're in charge.
Yep. We could do them on the way. So, if you guys have questions, raise your hands. We've got a mic. You guys can ask them. This is really for you, not for us. So, here's where we get into the detailed statutes. I'm not going to read again all these because it's kind of boring. But there are a number of laws that talk about what we're expected to do and how we're expected to do it. I mean, in general, I also say this kind of sounds weird, but don't break the law. So, may seem obvious, but that's also part of being the school board. I mean, this was this care and management and control of school district affairs. There's the statute that says it. We have the general charge of the business. Again, we're guiding the ship overall. Right? Where are we going to? Like, Steve deals with how we actually get there. The rulemaking, management responsibility. We hire, fire the school, or superintendent. Again, not necessarily the direct principals, right, because that's next employees. He's our direct employee. And then, let's see. Trying to think if there's anything else big here. The other thing, it says Steve is a non-voting member of the board. Right? So, Steve, which is why he's up front with us. We also look to him for guidance as well. It's a two-way street. I mean, and I think that in our district is maybe different than other districts where we have a back and forth. And I like to think of generally a good relationship with our superintendent, which is why he is still employed here. And we give and take as to how to kind of run the district. Some of our responsibilities upon being elected to the position, we do have some basic training that we go through. And that's offered through the, I would say the wrong, MSBA, the Minnesota School Board Association. And they give some kind of great overviews and they talk about exactly this. They talk about kind of how we work with the superintendent. They talk about relationships with the superintendent, also with the school in general. And they talk about fun finance stuff for a long time, which is good detail that you get to hear. Again, all the reasons why you want to sign up for the school board. But it's learning how the inner workings of the school work. And it's, there's a lot kind of behind the scenes that just coming to the meetings is at the surface of it. I think I hit most of the other things. The, oh, sorry. One other thing I put out, too, is we do get involved in kind of bargaining contracts. And again, it's our choice as to how that's handled. So, as a school board, we in general, we talk about at a high level where we're going, how it's handled. And then, we hand it over to the administration to go ahead and execute. And it's that back and forth. And so, different school boards handle it different ways. We, again, policymakers and managing the superintendent. So, expectations of the school board. I know for me, coming into this, it's like, what does it mean to really be on the board? What's your commitment? And like, how many hours should you expect? You know, I remember going to Tim and asking him, like, you've been on it forever. Like, what does this mean? It's two meetings per month. There's only one in July, which goes by really fast because of the holiday. Here we are already. So, we've got two meetings per month. We get board packets the Wednesday prior. Then, we get the actual packet on Friday. We review, ask questions. It's interesting, is like, there's the review of the packet, the asking the questions. Some of us are late-night people. So, I know that Steve loves to see my emails on Monday morning that I sent at one AM, bright Sunday night. He's responding back while I'm still sleeping. And we ask questions about kind of the various things that are up for question, or up for discussion. In general, our board packets consist of a couple of presentations from different departments throughout the school district and then several policies. And we've got a schedule, a five-year schedule for kind of rolling policy review. So, when I say we review all the policies, we truly review all the policies. And so, we have a number that we look at kind of with each meeting. We also have assignments for schools. So, each of us board members are assigned to a school. So, like myself, I'm assigned to the high school. I try to stop by once a month and have a meeting with the principal. We talk about kind of current issues. It's nice for me to kind of stay up to date on it. And also, as a newer member, I learn more about the school district and then just ask questions about how things operate. And then, they come back. Right? I'll bring them back to our meetings. We also have committee assignments. I think most of us have three-ish. Sounds about right. Some are within the school, some are outside the school, where we participate, depending on your committee meetings. I know that some meet monthly, some meet quarterly. But so, there's participation in those. And then, just try to be present to kind of meet people. I mean, everybody interacts with the community different ways. We get emails. We get people who stop up and talk to us. I mean, for myself, again, and other board members can chime in on this, I try to be present at sporting events. Again, having kind of kids in that age range, it's nice to just, they're going to be there anyways. So, we're recorded, but I'm going to say it anyways. So, I'm there. I keep an eye on them and I can talk to people in the community and kind of hear current issues. And then, also just talk to other administration, too. I mean, it's, speaking from my experience, I know that a lot of the administrators just like the opportunity to talk to board members as well and to see us out in the community. And so, they'll come up and talk to us, too, along with community members and people outside the community. You guys want to add anything on that one for time commitments? I guess it didn't actually say hours. I mean, for me, I look and I say hours are typically, any given month, they're ten to twenty hours per month that I spend on the school board. And personally, I gave up all my other commitments because I knew that school board was going to be intensive and I wanted to spend time on it.
That's about right. Like, so when we get that packet on a Friday, you know, familiar, like, my early stages of packet reading, it took longer. I didn't know what all the words were and I didn't, you know, had to learn some of the lingo. And I didn't have the backstory for why something is worded a certain way or presented a certain way or why we've been doing it a certain way. And so, that took more time for me to learn and formulate my questions. I probably asked more questions ahead of time in exchange with the superintendent in that era than I do now, mainly because I've, you know, somehow I've learned I don't have to ask them all. My colleagues will ask many of them and also the superintendent's probably, you know, I could just mention it to him now and he's also experienced. And so, he can answer my questions without a lot of prep. But if I'm asking a really hard question or something that involves, you know, if I want a real answer to a serious question, it's polite to ask that in advance. Otherwise, I'm putting the administration in a strange spot. I ask a really hard question here and they're not afforded the opportunity to answer it. You know, so it's polite to ask that as soon as you can. So, packet prep is probably, it's a hundred to two hundred pages. It's not all stuff you read. It's the check register. I mean, it's all the checks. So, you get familiar with that and once you realize what you're looking for in there, you don't read them all. Stuff like that. So, that can take anywhere from one to three hours or five, depending on where you are and your ability to consume info. And then, the meetings themselves are two, on average. Unless Eric asks all those questions. Then, they're two and a half.
Thank you for that. You guys want to add in on that?
I think I don't spend five hours reading that packet.
No, no. In my first year, I might have.
Well, yes, yes, yeah. I guess I've been here seven and a half years. But what I have found is that when I look into a packet, I look into things that are listed for action, meaning that we are going to be voting on it and those I want to be more thorough with. Other policy reviews, we will see them probably three times. So, then, I kind of like welcome discussion that we do here. I think we also have areas of strength. And there are times where I just say, you know, that's, that sounds like a crystal thing or that sounds like a team thing. And I just, you know, enjoy the conversation. And I think that allows me to ask more questions during the meeting for the public's view and enjoyment. So, I guess what I, is that it's different for everybody. And I think that first question of why you're doing it because it's public service. You know, this is not going to be your nine-to-five job if there's anything like that anymore. But like, you do it because you care about the community. You care about the kids. You feel that it is in you to make a change that you need, that you like to see happen, that you want to see that go through. And then, based, I think we all learn and access information, consume it in different ways. So, yeah, and then with time, it gets easier, for sure.
Right? Some of it is your personal ability to, like, so you want to be prepared so that if someone were to ask you, but your personal comfort with saying, I don't know that, I'll have to find out, is the sooner you get your arms around that because we are not omniscient. We do not know everything that is happening at all times, at all hours in the district. So, that's, that's just reality. We're, even people who work here full-time and way beyond forty hours a week are not able to answer. They're not aware in real time, everything that's happening in the district. You know, there's four thousand. Craig might. There's four thousand plus students. There's six hundred plus employees. There's, you know, so there's ten to thousand people collectively interacting with the district on a given day. You don't know every, what every one of those interactions was. So.
I will also throw out there, sorry, I'll put, it's our board, right? And so, so I think as we change members, right, the style of the board changes a bit, too. And so, you know, one of the things kind of with us new to the board is like asking questions about like, what do these names mean? And so, like, to Tim's point of like, learning, you'll see that the board packets have changed in the last year of like, there's more acronyms explained upfront. Just so like, like, I'm tired of like, having to dig back. And so, now, it's at the beginning of each packet, which is awesome. Right? And so, that even if there are things that I don't recognize, I can go back there and look. And so, we put some of that information there. And it's like, again, it's our style in the way how we do it has shaped some of the things today versus how it looked, you know, when you were first on the board.
In the Stone Age.
In the Stone Age.
Yeah. No, I, I think it, the, the culture and the way in which people interact does evolve and change based on who the six people are. Absolutely. And I think one of the things that I've appreciated is that there are, I think, some also consistent ways of operating and ways of being that are important for our team, who are the constants. The thing I was going to go back to around expectations of the board, just real quickly, is the additional liaison assignments are something that I think often raise questions for people, especially wondering like, how much additional time or how many additional responsibilities come with that. And so, I wanted to share that that is determined by the board in January of every year, where as a group, you really look at what are all of the different groups that need board representation? And we actually go through, I think, usually two meetings before we make any official decision. So, it's meant to be a thoughtful process where people get to really select the things that feel aligned to their interests and then sometimes the things that are completely new but might expose you to new aspects of the district. So, I just, I wanted to emphasize that you have some agency in that process. And the amount of time really can vary a lot based on what the assignment is. So, I have two that are much more time-intensive than is typical, but it works for my schedule and I love doing it. So, it, it, it has worked really well for me. I don't think that would be feasible for a lot of people. So, it's, it's something that you get to participate in and, you know, as a, as a group collectively make decisions around.
Know the law. Like this. So, open meeting law is a big one. And it actually, to me, kind of ties back into some of the reasons why I ask questions in public. Transparency, right? It's like, open meeting law is that we, as a board, cannot talk without being in public. Right? So, I'm going to read this specifically. So, a quorum for more board members, and in this case, since we're short a board member, three or more board members may not meet or discuss any form of school district business without it being considered an open meeting and subject to this law. So, we're very cautious about like, making sure that we don't have too many of us talking at one time, talking together at one time. So, even like, pre-meeting, like, I scoot over to Dr. Paula, I like making sure that's like, we're not having a side meeting, right, or what's perceived as a side meeting before the board meeting. Same thing if we're out in public. And so, you know, it's like, if we, we don't text each other, we don't email all each other because it's like, we don't want to break Minnesota's open meeting laws. So, along those lines, we do our best to try to be transparent and try to share information. There's also data privacy law, which protects certain types of data. And I always think of like, for me, it was like getting my head around being on the school board is, we're a business. Right? And it's like, and some people hate hearing me say that, but I'm like, we are a company, the Richfields Public Schools, and our students, their education is our widget. Right? It's like, and so, in that, we have employees and those employees, right, have certain rights. And so, the employees have rights, the students have rights. We need to be careful to protect that. So, that's the data privacy aspect of it, where we can't always share information. And then, the open meeting law of like, these are all recorded and they're safe for later. It's like, even when we have closed meetings, it's recorded and safe for later. It's like, it's all fun stuff because that's the law. And earlier, if you remember, we saying, don't break the law. That's why we, we say it.
Just to chime in, the, if, the mandatory training that the, that we have to attend through the school board association, they really hammer the open meeting law a lot. If you come away with nothing from that, from that training, it's that you will not trip up the open meeting law. So, it's just, you have to be careful and thoughtful about it because it does extend to texts and it does extend to emails. Those are virtual meetings. And it does extend to something called the serial meeting, where if I emailed Crystal and Crystal forwarded it to Paul and Paul forwarded it to one more person, we've suddenly conducted that if it eventually makes its way back. So, believe it or not, we don't have substantive discussions as a group outside of what people see on, on our YouTube channel or in this room.
Can I add one thing, though, that I think is important? Which is, the open meeting law applies to the currently five, usually six, elected school board members. It does not apply to our staff.
Correct.
So, one of the things that will often happen is the superintendent is able to talk with each one of us individually. And I think that gives him and his team an opportunity to get a sense of where our individual board members feeling or thinking about a particular issue so that he and his team can really be prepared. We just can't do that with each other. I just think sometimes that, that part of it is not always.
Correct. Yeah, that, that part of the superintendent is able to actually operate and present things with an understanding of how we might think. He does not necessarily tell us what everyone else is thinking.
Right, right. He's like taking it all in, but not really checking back, oh, Crystal just said, 'cause then that's just.
And the penalties for that are usually fines, and, and you, as an individual, would be personally responsible. So I prefer not to be fined.
Back to, don't break the law.
Don't break the law.
See? Worst to live by. Uh, along those lines, we also have, uh, Stud Board, School Board Member Code of Ethics. Actually, all of our policies are out online, and so they're easy to find. So you can rece- receive, read what those policies are and what the ethics are, uh, and there's links available for you. We're flying through. You guys better have a lot of questions, 'cause we're gonna have a long break. Um, let's see. So, if you're ready to join the board, like I said before, um, talk to the superintendent, I guess I didn't add him in before. Steve is a great resource to kind of give feedback, kind of from his perspective about what it means to be on the board. So I'd talk to him as well as talk to us, uh, 'cause you get kind of different perspectives. Attend board meetings. Uh, I would suggest you guys stay tonight, 'cause it's gonna be fun and exciting one to listen to. Sounds good. Uh, so, so we're more excited than others. Uh, and like Tim said, I mean, I think, I don't know the longest one we've had, I think we've gone to eleven. That's not gonna be tonight.
Sorry, June.
Not tonight.
June meeting is long.
June meeting's long.
In September, that's.
In September, okay. Uh, but, and again, I'm not trying to scare you, I'm trying to be realistic. I, I mean, I think most of them do end, you know, seven to nine, I don't know, I'm back in the, the times again. But attendant, it's worthwhile to listen to. It's more exciting in person than it is, you do, 'cause you get your random banter, and you don't have to skip through it.
Just, just for, when it says read the minutes, the minutes don't, don't do much more than reflect the actual actions that were taken. So they'll say, Paula's moved an item, second by Banks Cupshot, and approved unanimously. It won't include all of the discussion, so that if you wanna hear the discussion, that's where the YouTube video will come in. The pro tip is to watch us on one and a half speed. It moves things along. I am the only person here who talks fast enough to be distorted at that speed, everyone else is perfectly understandable. You have that, that Midwestern steady, you know, that Midwestern upbringing. The East Coast comes out when I start rolling, and then it, at one and a half, I'm harder to understand.
Are you sure I'm understood at one point?
Yes, yes, you work really hard at it, yeah. You do a great job.
Thank you.
Again, th- this is what you guys are signing up for. Uh, I talked about the MSBA before, um, nonprofit, uh, a- again, they're a great resource. There's a, just a lot of information about just kind of how school boards run, uh, the do's and don'ts, and they give advice, they talk about current issues. That's all accessible, I mean, yeah. Uh, that was the, the news website too, right?
Yes, the e-clippings.
Yeah.
Yeah, the publications, they publish a, a, a string of articles around the state and the, the country, but mostly state-focused for things happening in school districts across the state. So it's called their, under their publications, their e-clippings, and it says a list of headlines you can click to and find out what's going on in other communities relating to school boards and things like that. So you can find out, you know, are we normal, are we strange? Are we, you know, strange for good reasons or bad?
And I bring it up because for me, it's like, as I was running for school board, I found that very useful, to kind of just start to get my head around what does it mean to be on the board, and like, what are the current issues presented to the boards? So it's, it's a good, it's a good read. And then more information, right? We've got, uh, on our website, uh, you can see about the school board, there's resources there, we talk about the, um, there's public comments, the school board calendar, um, all of our materials, you can also see committee assignments. Again, I think the website, uh, hopefully Jennifer's watching, 'cause I'm putting a plug in, I think the website's great, it's got a lot of information out there. And if it's not easy to find, you can always ping Jennifer Valley. Bam. Thirty minutes, now expect thirty minutes of questions.
Thank you.
We do not expect it. We would welcome it though.
We welcome it. I, I, hopefully I didn't scare anybody for wanting to run for the board, uh, and if I did, please ask questions so I can go ahead and clarify.
Could you, could we ask that you come with the microphone? It, it is on the TV. Or we'll bring the microphone to you, even better.
Service.
Press it so that it's green?
Okay. First, um, as you heard in the interview, I am a substitute teacher for Richfield Public Schools. Does that have to end when I'm on the board?
No. Um, what, so I, I, I will go on and say that Mr. Holt, you will correct me, but I believe the statute changed last year to allow earnings of up to twenty thousand dollars from the district for a school board member. Uh, the one thing that would come up is if we were to vote on substitute pay, uh, you should probably recu- recuse yourself from that specific discussion. Am I, am I wrong on that?
Um, no, the only other component is the board would have to agree and vote in a meeting with everybody present to allow you to take on work within the district.
Okay.
Which we have historically done for several board members in the past. This has, this has happened before.
Those board members don't remember because they didn't get to vote.
Okay, 'cause I could easily go back to St. Paul if I had to, I mean, I could, I could do that.
So board members, just so you know, have approved a bus driver, um, from the board, we have approved, um, a substitute from the board. And I think those are the main roles that people have filled, so that's not new.
I got a question for the board members. How much did you spend on your campaigns? And do we campaign?
Uh, I could jump in, I mean, the, the campaign's finance reports that are out there are something that could guide that answer, you could see what people have paid in the past. The last cycle, it was only three of us who ran for three spots. So there might not have been as much spending as there are, i- is in a, in a more heavily contested race. I, I don't know really, you'd really have to go back and look at that. I've never really done fundraising, but I ran so long ago originally and have kind of gotten by without it. There are other communities where the, the expenditures can be easily into the thousands. So it also depends where you source your materials.
Okay.
I will, I will take us back eight years, when I ran for the first time, and, uh, did raise, uh, what felt like a sizable amount of money to me certainly, and I think it felt like a lot to other people as well, because it was atypical at the time, um, to have, you know, a lot of fundraising involved in a school board race. I personally am fine with that, 'cause I think, especially if there are more people running than there are seats available, I think campaigning's super important, because it helps people understand who is running, what are their values, what do they believe in? And so my, the, the main reason I wanted to say something is, yes, I think campaigning is really important. And so I, I strongly encourage people who are running for school board to make the case for why they want to be on the school board, and to do the work to show the type of school board member that they would want to be.
That's all I have, right?
Okay. The campaign finance reports, if you go to our About the School Board, they're under the archived agendas and materials, and it's twenty fifteen, seventeen, nineteen, and twenty-one are available. So that would cover Crystal and Paula's first election.
Thanks for the opportunity. Um, a, a question for the various board members that are here. As far as networking with other boards, first, is there an issue at all with networking with multiple other board members? And, you know, what are the kinds of questions or, or networking you've done with other boards, and what have you learned from other school boards throughout the state or nation?
I, I don't, there's, there's no prohibition against networking with other boards, like, like, for example, the folks in Bloomington. We've met them a number of times, you know, first at MSBA training, and then at subsequent MSBA training and other things here and there. I've had a few ongoing dialogues with them about, with a particular board member there, about some things that have popped up in front of us, because some things hit us both at the same time or, or close to that. There's no prohibition against it. I mean, Crystal has probably the best connectivity to it via both her, just her, um, regular connectivity, but also some of the roles you've had for us, right? She's our District Two Eighty Seven rep, which connects to ten other member districts automatically, so you might be the best at this.
Yeah, the, the, the two board, the two sort of assignments that I mentioned that are significantly more time, but I love, are the opportunities where I really am getting to know and working with school board members from across the metro area, and I love that. And I do try to bring back to Richfield things that I'm hearing, things that we're talking about in those spaces that feel really relevant to us and to our work. And so I absolutely love those opportunities, which to me come in the form of four extra board meetings a month, so that's the extra time. The other thing is that the, the School Board Association, the statewide one, does an annual conference, so that is an opportunity for all board members to really connect with people across the state. So it's a very different point of view than I think what we often are talking about and spending our time on here in Richfield. But it is a great way to see what are some of those conversations that are taking place. And, uh, yeah, building those relationships and, and getting to know, um, the context of districts outside of our own has been one of, uh, the best things about being on the board for me personally.
Um, and then the other question I had for maybe some of the other board members is, how long did it take you to feel like you were up to speed and had your feet underneath you, and from, from the time that you were, started in January to, when you felt comfortable?
Still working on that. I mean, there is some, I mean, as far as like how the meetings like go, and, you know, really feeling comfortable like with the meeting process, um, I would definitely say it like took that first year, really. And, you know, really kind of getting the groove of, um, like, committee assignments and, you know, being a part of that process, and then of course it all like changed again right after that. But, I don't know, like, now that I'm like fully immersed into my second year, this definitely feels, um, a lot better, more, you know, I'm more firmly planted in this. And, you know, you never really know like what's coming, so that part, um, I don't know really like how you prepare for that. But as far as, you know, the policy work, you know, that stuff, like, that feels a lot better. But as far as like, you know, some of the issues that come before the board, you know, that I just try and just take as it comes, so.
I think for me, I, um, it depends on the area. I was the, the only person of color on the board when I was elected seven and a half years ago. And I think the importance of representation is that you bring points of view that may not be known to other people. And I remember feeling very self-conscious to bring those up, because I'm constantly reading people's faces when I speak to them, and I could feel like, uh, what is she talking about? Like, this is the first time ever I hear this. So if, 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 it was uncomfortable, I would say for the first six months. But I have colleagues like Crystal, like Tim, who will then, and then Steve also help and validate or, or restate something I said, and then that made me feel better. There are times, like, I, I could probably come with my hands at times I have ever done the first motion, I don't ever wanna do that, I'm, I'm always afraid I'm gonna get the language wrong. I, it doesn't matter if you do, like, if you do, someone will say, oh, it's a resolution, or it's, you know, it's fine, there's really no right way, but I'm very demanding of myself. So I, I, I took like three years before I tried to do one of the four positions available. I think, uh, Crystal just voluntold me to be treasurer, uh, on year three, because I was just like, I, I kept thinking, like, I'm not ready to take on more things, like, I wanna take it all in and absorb more. And then when time comes by, you're like, oh yeah, I already knew that, and then you like see behind and say, I guess I was okay, you know, I guess, you know, the kids were all right, so. So I think it depends on what areas, when there's children who come, 'cause I'm a former teacher, when their kids come from schools, I come, I'm my, I'm my happiest. You know, school events also, uh, graduations, uh, best day of the year. So there's, there's a lot of very rewarding moments. And if you're just doing something you're passionate about, you know, time comes by and then, you know, figure things along the way.
I'll say six months-ish is where I kind of felt comfortable, like where I'm like, I might be underneath there, I'm like, sorry for the newbie question. And then, you know, the, the year mark hits, and you're like, did we do this before? 'Cause I don't remember doing budgets and, was that? 'Cause the, the problem is, is when you're first doing it, it's like you're mid-school year already, and it's just coming at you, I mean, it's really the, the fire hose, just like, ah. And then, so like, year two, I can only imagine, when we get to January again, it's when you're like brand new all over. So there's a little bit of that, and then some policies in it's, um, some you're more invested in, and some you, you kind of dig deeper into. Um, also, I mean, Paula just touched on it, but the, the different roles, I mean, I think that changes as well, right? So it's like, you know, kind of my first year just learning on like, how to look at the policies, how to look at the updates. And then the next thing is like, okay, now as I'm sitting at vice chair, it's like, how do I run a meeting? So when she's asked, I'm like, oh my God, I've gotta do this, right? And it's like, it's a whole different ballgame, trying to like manage a meeting and ask questions and listen, and so it's like the different roles and the responsibilities that you have as the different positions.
It's an experience for all of us when Eric runs a meeting.
Thank you.
The broad strokes repeats every year though, right? Like the broad strokes, there is a lot of what we do that's predictable that repeats in a given year. And then there's things that come up out of nowhere that there's no preparing for really, and so getting, you know, used to that is, that, that part we can set aside. But the stuff that, that is predictable, uh, it's understandable if it takes you a full year, and like Eric said, you just kind of start mid the first year, and so maybe even, you know, almost a year and a half to say like, oh yeah, I kind of, I fully have seen it all within the context of the school year. That would be totally normal. If you go faster than that, great. If you went slower than that, that's, you know, it's, it's your job to do, so, yeah.
I have questions. So, one of the things that I'm wondering about, and it kind of ties between like things that are listed in board responsibilities, and then like this kind of like other duties as assigned, right? 'Cause it's, it can be fairly, um, people have a lot to, a lot of opinions, and a couple of things that I'm really wondering about, like, what, how you're being contacted from individuals who likely reach out, whether it's at sporting events or emails, or however people are contacting you, are really around, um, student achievement and educational programs, knowing that, you know, we're doing better than we used to, but people have a lot of opinions on that. So I'm just actually wondering more about engaging with the, with people who are reaching out and meeting their expectations, um, and, you know, what, what strategies have worked for you? Because I do understand that there's limitations of serving on a board and the immediacy in which people want responses. So the question that I have is, you know, how, how do you do the best job you can with the information you have at the time to help people not panic? Especially, you know, coming out of COVID, and so many more children are being referred for about every kind of developmental issue that could have been impacted.
Yeah, thanks. I, I'll take the first crack of that, and then I'll expect you guys to help me out here on this one. So you asked kind of a bunch of questions there at once. So I guess I'm gonna answer from the, I, I'm at a football game, and someone comes up to me and kind of unloads and says, what do you think about this? You know, and my response is a few pieces. Uh, I would probably start by saying, i- if, if your question was given to me, I'd say, you know, I'd look at the strategic plan, right? It's like, we have updates, and the strategic plan talks about how over the five-year period we're trying to, and I say five-year period because we're amidst strategic plan, but how we're trying to improve those scores, improve those numbers. We also report a couple times a year on it, so you can go back and look and see the progress we made throughout the year, and we talk about it in detail, and I know it's super exciting, but if people are truly passionate about it, then I'd suggest they go and watch YouTube to hear, here's the full detailed update on it. The other thing is where I defer a little bit sometimes to administrators, to get our help, to say, hey guys, right, it's like, this is the person you wanna talk to. Oftentimes when people come up and ask me questions, my goal, you know, I mean, Tim's point earlier saying, I don't know the answer, um, if we truly don't know, we get back to them. If we do know, it's like, oh, that's a married question, right? It's like, and I, she's the expert, she's the one you wanna talk to. And, and I don't want people to think that I'm handing it off, but the answer really is with that expert. So it really depends, I guess, in short, as to what question I'm being asked, to say how we're driving it and how we're addressing it.
So I'm gonna tag in real quick, 'cause I'm often copied on that. I would actually say, board members I don't think are actually contacted as often about educational programs and achievement as you might think. That's usually what's on social media. Board members are typically contacted about incidences or questions about larger issues, and usually something that is significant in the community. So there's a very different communication between board members and then also what you might read online, um, which is one of those interesting components. Um, and then, um, we're always here as admin, as Eric pointed out, to support, um, that information. You wouldn't necessarily, as a board member, be expected to know, um, what's happening in the nitty gritty of certain things, or to necessarily respond. And oftentimes, um, our preference is, is that you'd say, oh, let me direct you to the person directly involved in that. So Amy Scarry-Clacker, for example, over in Community at Early Childhood, would be the person we would then route, or you as a board member would often route some of those, those components to.
The, the other thing I'll jump in is kind of to Steve's point, so oftentimes when we get requests or get questions, if they're written, um, they'll oftentimes be directed to the whole board, and Steve will often get copied on it. One thing that was something for me to get my head around as a new member is that, uh, we don't see responses back. And sometimes that, that bugs me, but it's like, if we go back to the open meeting laws, you can't respond back to everybody. So the way we operate as a board is typically our chair will respond back, uh, on behalf of the board, um, and if an individual member is interested, they'll respond back directly and not copy. So, and when the chair responds back, the same thing is they can't copy the board, because you're now sharing opinions and you're breaking open meeting law. So we're very careful about that, and people, I, I don't know if they always understand it. That's why I like to have that interpersonal discussion, say, hey, this is why I'm, I'm explaining this, or this is why we're not all talking about it. Or if Tim comes over to me by the football game, I run away, 'cause it's like, we don't wanna, right? I mean, 'cause of open meeting laws. I don't get my jabs in.
That said, like we, we do, we have socialized briefly. And I think we are very mature to know.
You just can't talk about official business.
Exactly. We don't talk about, so when, when, earlier before the meeting started, we were talking about Netflix, My List, right? Like, that's not, you know, it's fine.
We did not break the law doing that.
Right. Something to what Superintendent Unoski said about social media. One thing that I did for mental health, I think six years ago, I got out of it. I, social media, there were times where parents would be talking about my child who was at STEM and I didn't appreciate that. And I got out and I got, and that's okay. You know, you do what you need to do to take care of yourself. It's not part of the job that you're checking on the Facebook group for the, for the Rich, you know, Richfield community. But people know, they know I'm not there. So when people want to get a hold of me, they know where to find me and they often do. I have never had anyone shown up at my house. I have had very great conversations with constituents for seven and a half years. This is what Craig will be knocking on wood. And so it is not as, as, you know, it's not like, I've worked in Congress offices and legislators at this, and this, absolutely nothing like that. There's no like email chain, digital actions that you get and then now you have to respond. There's nothing like that.
The MSBA training does give you some insight. You listen, you know, you try to process it and if you can answer it, you do. And if you can't, you start thinking, you know, you take note of who the person is and then you go to the administrators and say, the person asked about this, can you jump in? Because the truth is, they don't need an answer from me. They need an answer from someone. Quite often, they don't know who they should talk to.
Yeah.
And you providing those resources is the job. Like, we don't have an operational role.
Right.
So our role is really just guidance.
We're like the traffic at the corners. So you go over here and come back if you don't have, I have no, I always said to people, come back to me if you haven't heard back. No one has ever reached back because their situation, you know, their questions were answered. And then, because as, as board members, our role is not to administer the district. Our, our job is to have a great person at the top doing so, who's actually trained and experienced to do that. Our role is to govern, to have a vision for what we think the district should be. And there's six of us when we are fully staffed. And I always say, the board is a power of a whole, because as on your own, you really don't have any power. But together collectively, through sharing of like, oh, I envisioned this, I'm wondering about that, then you're able to bring people along, build consensus, bring the community along and so on.
I also just wanted to add, because I think the board has set this as a vision. Often those voices that I'm guessing you're talking about, because there is a pattern, there is a certain demographic that shares a certain perspective about our district. And that's not the same perspective often shared by a different demographic. And so really making sure that we are amplifying marginalized voice and gathering voices from all across the community to make sure what we're hearing is representative.
I don't, the agenda said 6:45. Am I allowed to ask one more question?
Sure.
Okay, this is, it's around budgeting because, you know, educational finance is, is very, is big. We want to be able to pay our staff well because teaching is incredibly intellectually and emotionally laborious work. How proactive, you know, like, this is a piece where even if I've listened to the amazing presentations that everybody has done on the YouTube channel and like, I'm like, I love those, the OSHA report was great, I liked it. I really did. But thinking through the ability to be proactive when you only have a certain amount, you're like, you have a finite amount of resources. And so you have to make really sometimes decisions that are unfavorable, but you don't actually have more money. So that, my question is like, when you're put in the position of the rub, you know, how do you make the best decision that you can? Because there's not actually another choice. You have to, you only have so much money.
Fiscal responsibility is a big part of our job. So that's, that's definitely at the top of, I speak for myself at the top of my mind and understanding that just like at home, you may decide a lot of things, you may not be able to afford all of the things. So then through conversation, there's something about, you know, prioritizing. And that's a fair thing, but it's also, not everything that, that we do here is popular with everybody. And the reality is, we don't, we don't make decisions to be popular. We make decisions based on what we think is the right thing at the moment. And we just have to live with that. And there's a lot of conversation and there's a lot of expertise. And that's why the different scenarios that the administration brings over, explaining all of the pros and cons and then really allowing us to dissect that and talk about it, that's really, makes you feel at least, I always say to people, as long as I'm okay tomorrow with how I voted, I'm fine. You know, not, no, not everybody has to like it.
We also ask Craig to do magic and pull rabbits out of his hat and he does that every day. So.
And I guess I'll chime in too with the whole, if I heard the question, it's like, we as a board are not making decisions on a specific individual, or like, this person should get paid more. We're saying we should allocate this much for teachers or this much for this. Right, it's again, and then the details are down to the individual administrator to go ahead and manage that.
I do think, like philosophically, the things that I tend to really think about when we come to these moments are, what is the work that we have done to get to this point? Who has been involved? What are their perspectives and opinions? And how can I as a board member look across all of those things to help inform my own point of view? And then I think, you know, for me personally, and I think this is really shared across us as a board, is what is going to do the least amount of harm to our students? And so I think that that often is at the center of the conversations as we're having them around finances. What is the direct student impact and how do we minimize harm there? And really look at, you know, the strategic plan that we have set out as a district as we're making these financial decisions and really see those direct connections, in particular when the tough choices need to be made.
Yeah, I think the board does a really good job of setting a very clear vision and parameters and expectations for us as we manage. So they would want us to get representative voice. They want us to hear what our perspectives on that. And then they want to hear why and how does it connect to the larger picture of what we're trying to accomplish with students at the center. And so as board members, the clearer you can be about the values of the group and the values of our plan, that guides administration in leading according to the values of, of the board.
And where, do you want to wrap up, say something? You looked like you were going to.
I was just going to ask, are there any more questions? I mean.
Well, I was, because we have to start a regular meeting at seven and we went over 10 minutes. My invitation is really, I'll give you all my phone number, call me. And I'll be happy to tell you more about, about the job, about the things, because 45 minutes an hour is not, not enough. And some of us think about things when we're waking up and, or go to sleep. So please, this is a really great experience of public service that really feels like, if there's something altruistic, this is it. If I can think about, I know there's people that there's no such thing, but it really is a good thing as long as you're doing, you know, what you're passionate about. And, and that question about why you're doing it, definitely everyone on the campaign trail or in the months between now and then, people will want to know. So, you know, putting that, thinking about that is, is always great. So thank you so very much for coming. And we're recording, right? Anyone who's watching now or later also, feel free to reach out to me. I won't speak for my fellow board members, but always happy to talk.
Do we have to officially end the study session?
Just go into a.
All right.
Yeah, thank you so much.